We're ready to roll. It's five.
Yeah, so we're not going to do a roll call.
We do?
No.
Nope.
Just call it to order and off we go.
Okay. We like to call this meeting to order at 5:00 o'clock. This is the regular agenda setting meeting on July 6th. So, no roll call. The agenda setting, business agenda first would be staff appearances. And Jen Baker, the librarian, is here. Hello.
Hello, everybody. Try to keep a quick update for you guys. So, we have a summer reading program that's in full swing. We currently have 43 participants. And all seem to be loving everything we're doing so far. The program ends July 28th. And we're planning on having a little mini-party to entice kids with treats and stuff to come in. So, this month, Arrowhead Library System has provided us with a kit called the Found Object Puppets. The program is sponsored by ALS and funded in part or in whole with money from Minnesota's Arts and Cultural Heritage Fund, which is our taxes. So, thank you guys for paying your taxes. And the artist who created the kits, Christopher Lutter Gardella, will be at the Aurora Library on August 15th at 4:00 p.m. to showcase and interact with some of our local puppet makers. We hosted a kids' craft day for the Celebrate Aurora's 3rd of July festivities, and it went over wonderful. So, we have 72 kids and 52 adults participate. They did 220 crafts and 65 coloring sheets. So, it was such a great reaction. We plan on doing this every year from now on. And we're working on ways to collaborate and participate in the Pumpkin Fest and holiday heritage festivals as well. And then on, oh, sorry, July 15th at 4:00 p.m., we'll be hosting a program called Bubble Wonders. Bubble Wonders is an uplifting show full of surprises using bubbles to inspire others to follow their dreams. The host, Jeff, combines incredibly incredible bubble wizardry with whimsical words of wisdom and leaves the audience feeling like anything truly is possible. And this will be held at the community center. So, yeah, lots of fun stuff coming up and lots of fun plans that hopefully are coming up.
A lot of great programming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next agitum, administrator updates.
Yep, I'm going to pass on mine till the end so I make sure we got enough time for the attorney engineer and for Jeff Anderson from the Costin Group to get their presentations in. So, I'll pass to the attorney currently.
I just have what's on the agenda tonight unless anyone's got some questions for me.
Questions? No questions. City engineering updates.
City engineering. So, last meeting, we approved the First Avenue final design. So, just an update there. We're beginning topographic survey tomorrow. So, you'll see some of our guys out taking some shots. So, with that, we've done some utility locates, planned for July as well as some soil borings. We know what kind of material we're working with under the street. Helps aid in design of that gravel and blacktop section. We're going to be working with city staff this month to review overall vision for the streets. So, sidewalks, street width, parking configurations, and stuff like that. And so, making sure we're starting on the right foot. And then with that, we're working towards doing a local road improvement grant application to, it's through MINDOT, but it's to fund projects just like this. So, also, we're working to get the, on the lead service line inventory grant funding. I believe city staff is taking care of that. And then the big one, next week is the bid opening for Pine Grove Park Parking Lot. Scheduled construction in mid-August or contractually can begin as soon as mid-August and then needs to be completed by end of October. The plan would be to, so we open bids next Tuesday and then we'll bring those to council at July 15th, I believe.
Thank you.
Any questions on any of that stuff, Pine Grove Park construction or anything? Good.
You're tying that project into the parking lot at the same time for the?
Correct. So, I did put a provision in the contract that, I think it's 10 days, like when they get into that existing blacktop road, they have to be out of there. So, that way, they're not opening that up and then, you know, waiting three weeks or four weeks to come back to it. So.
We did wait till after the softball and ball seasons were done. So, that lot would be kind of dead at that time. And then they can still park down below for the splash pad. So, we'll have something open for them.
Will signage be placed?
They'll take it. All the safety barricades, all that's in the contract for the contract.
Other questions? Other agenda questions or additions?
That'd be Jeff. Yep, you're up. You've got your time.
Where would you like me to speak from?
Yeah, you want to sit down?
How's that? Thank you for the opportunity, councilors, to stop by and provide an update tonight on the 2023 legislative session. On behalf of my colleague Gary Sirkvenic, we appreciate the opportunity to work on behalf of the city of Aurora, representing you in front of the Minnesota Legislature. We were initially brought on. Many of you will remember working on the Joint Water Project and are appreciative to have worked on that with some success. And now to have advocated and lobbied on behalf of the city this last session. With a DFL trifecta at the legislature, 6,700 bills passed, 75 new chapters of law written, and the governor's first-ever veto. This was a session unlike any other I have ever seen. It was a fire hose of activity versus a trickle of activity which we had seen in some previous sessions leading up until this year. Half of the legislature was new. And here in northeastern Minnesota, we were dealing with the retirement of Senator Bach and the death of Senator Tomasoni. So, losing some considerable experience and clout in the legislature. And with new legislators, our state senator here for Aurora, Rob Farnsworth, Senator Grant Hostchild, and Representative Roger Scrabaugh, all representing northeastern Minnesota were new to the legislature. Your district, your city, did maintain some pretty big clout in DFL leadership in the House with the reelection of Representative Lizlegard last November. And as you know, he was appointed Chair of the House Property Tax Division, also served on the House Environment and Natural Resources Committee and the Veterans and Military Affairs Committee. So, I can tell you, having a resident of your city in the legislature and someone who knows city government was a great benefit for Aurora and really northeastern Minnesota and the Iron Range this legislative session. And I'll get to more of that. I'll start just quickly with the tax bill. Even though I go to different municipalities and other organizations to talk about the legislative session, people always ask about social security. And social security was exempted to the largest number ever in terms of earning. Were married and joint couples earning $100,000 annually or $78,000 as single heads of households and then phasing out was passed in the tax bill. So, upwards of over 80% of Minnesotans will now pay no taxes on their social security retirement. Most legislators, both DFL and Republican legislators in northeastern Minnesota, had advocated for full elimination and exemption, but that didn't happen. So, it's moving in that direction, though. The tax bill also included direct tax rebates to taxpayers, $260 per person with an additional $260 for each dependent, up to three. So, those checks will go out to more than 2.5 million Minnesotans beginning this fall. There's also new and simplified child and working tax, family tax credit provisions and increases to local government aid and county program aid, which are of benefit to certainly St. Louis County and cities all across the range. And I'll talk about that more in a moment. It also expanded the homestead credit refund, which went through the property tax committee and increases in payment in lieu of taxes, which is a particular benefit to counties like St. Louis County. All of those things, most of those really big provisions that impact cities all originated in the House and in the House Property Tax Division under Chair Lizlegard. And I just have to say, I think his experience serving on this board certainly resonated in the message that he delivered to his fellow lawmakers on both sides of the aisle as to the importance of local government aid and other funding mechanisms for cities and counties. And for Aurora, you probably know these numbers already. Your local government aid is increased by $57,083. You also have a one-time public safety aid grant of $73,867. So, total increased aid of $130,950 annually. I'm sorry, not annually. That includes the one-time public safety. By just over $57,000 annually. St. Louis County also had big increases, which is obviously helpful when it comes to the county and the projects that they are able to pay for, roads and bridge projects and others. Bonding at the legislature this year, aside from taxes bonding, one of the other big bills that started off very bipartisanly in the House of Representatives. 22 Republican House members voted for a bonding bill at the beginning of March. That included a number of projects for the Iron Range, including projects here in Aurora. It died, for the most part, in the Senate where Senate Republicans would not support the bill. They were holding out for several other tax provisions, and so the bill went nowhere. And we thought, as session came closer and closer to an end, that there, A, may be no bonding bill because in this legislative environment, in order to pass general obligation bonding, the DFL majority needed Republican votes. Or the DFL majority would go forward with just a cash bill. And the cash bill only required a simple majority, so they wouldn't need any Republican votes. The cash bill that was introduced by the DFL cut a lot of projects in northeastern Minnesota. Representative Lizlegard was able to keep bonding projects for Aurora in that bill. So, at the end of the day, we would have been in a pretty good spot either way. However, the agreement that happened allowed for both the cash bill, a modified cash bill, and a general obligation bonding bill to move forward, literally in the last day of the legislative session. And it did garner some bipartisan support. The cash bill had less bipartisan support, almost no bipartisan support. The general obligation bonding bill had bipartisan support to clear those hurdles. Aurora received or is benefiting to the tune of $2.5 million for work at the St. James' Pit, $630,000 for the community center. And then outside of that, there were a host of other spending bills, budget bills that the legislature passed. And lawmakers from the range, especially those in the majority, have always looked for places to earmark projects, to look where it might be a good fit in areas like the environment, transportation, all of the other spending bills. And again, Representative Lizlegard was able to do that in the transportation bill, finding a $3 million appropriation for Aurora and St. Louis County an earmark within that appropriation bill. And I give him a lot of credit, but being in the majority, being a chair, and having those relationships with the other chairs in the majority are really what it takes to get some of these earmark appropriations. And so, in total, just under $7 million will come to Aurora. So, in the, I haven't done the math, but I think in the whole scheme of things, if we were to look at per capita population, the city of Aurora did pretty good in this legislative session. So, moving forward, this next legislative session, which will begin on February 12th of 2024, is traditionally a policy year. Now, the legislature took up a lot of policy this year from earned, safe, and sick time and paid family leave, items like that. They will no doubt look at other policy provisions in areas from education to health and human services this year. But they will also be focused on bonding, passing another bonding bill. The even year is traditionally the bonding year. But the focus really was put on bonding in 2023 because nothing happened in 2022. There was no bonding and really nothing happened in that legislative environment. So, 2024 will be the traditional bonding year. It's the intention of the majority to move forward with a general obligation bipartisan bonding bill. But they have put cash aside from the original budget surplus to do a cash-only bill if they find that necessary. So, there, this, it will certainly be a competitive bonding environment across Minnesota to try to achieve money for projects. Right now, the way the economy looks, I wouldn't be surprised if we see some additional surpluses when the state does their budget forecasts in November and February. And that could lead to potentially additional budget bills being passed and other spending or another tax bill with possible tax cuts, tax relief. That will all unfold as we get closer to February and the start of the legislative session. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. But I want to thank Luke and the mayor for their advocacy in St. Paul. And I know all of you and your conversations with legislators and others, thank you for advocating on behalf of all of these projects. It matters when legislators hear from you and know how important these are. And it helps when you have a legislator who lives in your community who knows how important these projects are.
I guess I'll just start with, we do have a $3 million project and the 2024 bonding will be considered. We did submit that a couple of weeks ago. So, we're looking at doing First Avenue. And Bolton Make is our engineer on that. And we've put that in the PPL and the IUP list. So, we're taking all the steps that we have to do to try and look at getting some money in there next year. The one thing I would ask is, while the $2.5 million that goes to St. James is in the city of Aurora city limits, it did essentially go to the DNR. The $3 million is going to help Aurora for sure, but it's went to the county. Are they going to look at that when we ask for money for actual work in the city of Aurora and say, well, you guys just got this, when it essentially went to the DNR and the county, you know?
That's our, that's what we're going to be pushing on, yes. The fact that, obviously, while they're beneficial to the community, you're right. They did go through those other entities. The only direct appropriation coming to the city is the community center dollars, which had been in the queue for a while. Again, because nothing happened in 2022, that didn't move forward. And so, I think you have a number of communities that are in the same boat, making that same argument that there's been a backlog because 2020 was the last time a bonding bill had passed, October of 2020. So, these projects don't stop. These improvements are still needed and they just keep piling up. And so, I think that is absolutely the argument that needs to be made for the city that, yes, we're grateful for all of this support, but we continue to have needs. And this is what we prioritize as our number one need moving forward.
Can I ask a question? I don't know. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, mayor.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you, Sheriff, Presiding Chair. There we go. Two questions. One, I've never heard how much money was left on the table that wasn't somehow allocated or appropriated? And then the second question, so I don't have to interrupt twice. We, our citizens have been so concerned about property tax escalations and payments. What kinds of relief for property taxes were there in the legislation?
Sure, mayor and councilors. So, the legislature put aside $1 billion potentially for cash to be spent in bonding in the next legislative session. So, other than that, a lot of the, the majority of what was left in the surplus has been spoken for, both by spending and tax relief. Your question is great. Well, the legislature itself does not raise your property taxes. The relief that they have provided to counties and to cities and credits to taxpayers are what will inevitably lead to either property taxes stabilizing or potentially being lowered in some cases. And again, this, this, the tax relief in this bill is the largest passed in Minnesota history. And one can talk about spending, too. There's, it's the largest spending bill in Minnesota history. But the tax relief is substantial for, especially for, I would say, to summarize, middle-class families in the state of Minnesota.
Thanks.
Other councilors, any comments or questions?
If nobody else is going to say it, I think we ought to at least thank Jeff and his team. I think Luke, and those of us that work that legislative things know how incredibly valuable the behind-the-scenes work that your firm did. It's good to have a legislator that's in a key position. But that's only one person, you know, from one perspective. And I know as a lobbyist, you have access to virtually all the legislators and help shape this sort of reaction to, you know, and legislation that Representative Lizlegard might have put in. So, you know, it's got a bit of, got a bit of trying time for you. And it looks like you survived okay. And certainly, the state's poised to thrive from it. So, thank you.
Thank you, mayor.
So, to go back to the administrative updates before we run out of time, administrator.
Yep. So, I just got a couple of things. Childcare Facilities Committee, so I'm not going to put anybody on the spot now. But one thing that's been brought up is potentially both the Union Hall sitting there. That might be a good spot for a daycare or something that could be run through the school. If somebody wants to get on a childcare facilities committee to try and spearhead that and look at what we could do for childcare, that's been brought to our attention. So, maybe think about that and kind of seek me out or if there's people in the community that we could do something like that with, whether they're current or past daycare operators or what the needs are.
That's an open discussion.
Yeah.
I mean, were you thinking like to have like a municipal childcare facility?
Well, I mean, it's, that's what the committee would find out, you know? I mean, you look at, you know, I would, I'd like, ideally like to see something like a private business, maybe possibly turn, turn a daycare center into the Union Hall. They could use the schools' facilities and you drop kids off and pick people up on your way as you're going there and whatever there. You can lock them to school. I mean, it's right there. So, it's just something to think about, put it all together. So, that was one thing that was brought to my attention to address tonight. National Night Out, I've been swamped with the 4th of July. So, I just, Tonah White has an excellent National Night Out that I saw that's being advertised. I don't have anything this year, but I did reach out to Chief Suler and Becky and our fire chief. What I think ideally I'd like to see done is we will put this on the Public Safety Committee, kind of like on our, their agenda. Because really essentially what the National Night Out is geared towards is public safety. Like fire, police department, I guess, is what started with it. Police Department's members of the community, come see us, here we are. And it kind of spiraled from there and then it's just grown into fire, EMS, health fairs, barbecues. I mean, you name it. I mean, the sky's the limit, right? Land choppers at these things and they do everything. Fire department recruiting. So, because we share the same enforcement agency as Hoyt Lakes, Chief Suler and I kind of talked about alternating years. One year would be in Aurora, one year would be in Hoyt Lakes. And then both communities would be welcome at each event. So, when it's in Hoyt Lakes, Aurora would be welcome there. We could bring the fire truck there. We could go there. When it's in Aurora, they would be welcome here. Their fire department would be welcome here. And we would just bring the communities together so that their staff isn't spread so thin. And we're not trying to, if we're getting outside sources like healthcare facilities, a lot of the same. You know, we'd be splitting them up. So, we'd be kind of putting a burden on that. I think we'd have a better event if we did it just at one. And then just alternate it every year. You know, we could do it in our. We have it here. We do the community center parking lot. Look for the community center, the fire hall would be a great spot. And they could choose their spot. Let our fire chiefs figure out what they want to send and personnel, what they want to bring. So, that's my plan moving forward for next year. This year, I don't have anything on there.
I noticed last year Hoyt Lakes had quite an event surrounding the Eastern Police Department and the Hoyt Lakes Ambulance Service. It wouldn't go to our community this year.
Yeah. So, and they're not having one this year either. So, the fire department kind of started that. Yep. The fire department, what I was told was using it as a recruiting tool for the fire department. And they're choosing not to do that this year. So, there's really not anything going on in Hoyt Lakes or Aurora this year. But I would like to see us put a, if it's in the Safety Board's agenda and they're working on it, there'll be a designated committee that'll always be doing it. We'll have to figure it out, funding for barbecue, you know, like barbecue and picnic and where that money comes from and things like that. So, I think it's something that needs an actual committee that can spearhead and think about it. And that's already established, you know? And it does really fall into the law enforcement umbrella. So, I think it would just help bring both communities together that way. So, that's what I'm looking forward to going forward. There is the moratorium. Tonight in the agenda, I'll get into a couple of agenda things. We're, we're looking to schedule, when we get in there to talk about it, a moratorium on the cannabis. And we'll be looking at setting a public hearing for, and we'll, we'll discuss this when we get there, but possibly July 20th, just to specifically talk about the moratorium on cannabis. And we're not going to alter anything that we have right now, of course. But it's just so new and Lindsey and the mayor went down and Kimberly went down. And it's just kind of blown up. It's kind of the topic of fire right now at the league. And there's just so many unknowns that the league doesn't even have, the state doesn't even have a board set up to regulate any of this right now. So, we don't want to jump on it. We kind of want to put a moratorium on it. But we want to make sure we're doing it right. So, that's what we'll address on, on that day. And Mr. Carney can echo me on that if he'd like. But we'll be discussing that. I did apply for a lead service line inventory grant. We have, by October of 2024, all of our service lines have to be inventoried for the Department of Health. And there's a full grant available for that. So, I applied for that. It was due July 20th. So, we'll wait to hear back on that. We have an engineering firm that will go and help assess what's in there. And we also are using lead service line in the bonding bill, which we'd asked for. That's what we kind of tried to get at that street. So, I just want you to be aware that we put in for a grant for that. And it's for identifying all of the lead service lines in the community.
Can we hear on that one? Want to hear back?
Sometimes it's whole.
We've, we've got, you know, somebody like Duluth in Minneapolis is going to have a much harder time to get theirs done. Ours will be a little bit easier, you know? A lot of it's going to be unknown, you know? You're going to go in someone's house and look and see and you're, and you're just not going to know. It's using the best of your maps and your data that you have. But we're asking for some outside help to come in and identify all that stuff and put it together. And then once it's together, we'll be able to qualify for money to replace those lines. So, we're just kind of trying to line the dominoes up to go after some of that money. I did apply for a League of Minnesota Cities grant today to help us get a grant. So, it's actually for grant writing. I submitted that to look for that LRIP grant. And what it is, is since we're using IRRR money and CDPG money and all this stuff and we've got so many resources going to the water plant and whatnot, this First Avenue project, which you've identified in the capital improvement plan, it's, it's large enough that we need to try and go after some other pools of money. So, this grant that I've applied for would help us go after this LRIP grant, which, Josh can kind of speak on that a little bit. But, so we'd probably hear back in a month or two on that. And we would use that to try and write out a longer grant, which is up to $1.25 million. So, it would cover a big chunk of that. See what else do we got here? Other than that, suppose we could talk about, because we are going to table the outdoor street cafe ordinance. I really want to try and get this done for next year. But some things I want you guys to think about, and we can talk about that right now, is my kind of thought is maybe we would open it up to Memorial Day through Labor Day or through the end of August or something like that. But we would have to put in there a caveat where the week of the 4th of July, they would have to remove it because we'd have the parade road in there and the street sweepers and the cleaning and all that stuff. Or alternatively, they could set it up after the 4th if they didn't want to. I mean, how big of a, it's up to them if they want to put in a very big wall and a very big patio seating and all that stuff. The other thing I have done is I've reached out to alcohol enforcement. The other thing I have done is, I've reached out to alcohol enforcement and gambling board to find out if their liquor licenses, which I, I don't want to assume, but I don't know that they will cover them in the street, it's a new area and they don't own it, so if, if it does or doesn't, and finding out if it does or doesn't, how can it encompass it out there, so they could potentially sue alcohol out there, or if they can't, period. So, stuff like that, we got to kind of figure out, and, and, so I'm reaching, I've reached out to them, I'm still waiting to hear back. I guess thoughts on any of that stuff for you guys? No, so far?
So far, okay.
So, it's in the works, we're, we're looking at it, so we'll just table that tonight, just because I just want it on there for discussion and to think about it, and then when we get answers, we'll, we'll set it up and we'll discuss it before we do that. And then I guess the last thing I'll talk about, because we get to that time, is we're gonna appoint Russ Siltman as the, as the Public Works Working Supervisor, we're gonna, he was the only application, he is well-qualified, he has worked here a long time, everybody knows Russ, he's looking forward to learning the position, it's still a union position, we've approved it, we're gonna keep an interim tag on him, just because Wayne is still on the books, and if anything were to happen to him to come back, then we can move that interim tag quite easily, but once Wayne would fall off the books, then we'd be bringing it back to you guys to remove that interim tag, and then we'll probably look to advertise externally in August for Russ's position, or that utilities position that will open up now, so, if you guys got any questions on that? And maybe I'll save the thank you for the next meeting, but I've got the thank you for the county, too, that I'd like to get in there, but that's it, that's all I got.
Great, that is the end of our regular agenda setting meeting, slide six, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Move? reported? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.